Tim Flora and Chief Ryan Cole on the Fire Districts item. And so I'll turn it over to you guys to get us started. Thanks everyone for being with us today for the work session.
Commissioners and County Government, thank you very much for hosting us today and allowing us to go over some of the things that you have brought to our attention to try to outline how we're working on some of the areas in the fire service. We had a committee that was formed to include Jeff Angel, Steve Jones, Jeff Justice, Anthony Pennington, Renee Grant Cliff, Ted Williams, John Wilson. All worked on parts of this presentation. And so at this time, we want to go ahead and jump straight into the presentation. And I'm going to let Tim start off with some of the areas that they have identified from county management. And we want to thank county management for their extended cooperation and assistance with this. And I think mainly for her help with Tim and my proof as we've worked through this. I'm sure we're going to have many more things that we're going to accomplish as we get to do for you.
So since this is sort of a budget work session, I thought it was important since you as commissioners played pretty good role in designing the property tax rate. I thought it would be good to do a financial overview of the various fire departments. So my goal, my piece of this is really to sort of talk about the financial position, sort of explain the role of the county as a relation to fire department finances, sort of explain the major components of fire department finances and give sort of analysis of the financial condition. As well as since, again, you do set that tax rate, since we collect and distribute those tax revenues to the fire departments, I thought I'd kind of give you a little overview of how that works. Sort of discuss some of the options that we have looked at, discussed through this committee and as we've been getting out in the fire departments of these last, in the community in the last few months. And then other, just as some other considerations that we want to look at as that sort of came up to surface, came to the surface as we had those, began those extensions, these kinds of things. Just continue with the relationship that we have with those fire departments. So in regards to financial, this is just something. In regards to the financial position, really sort of, one of the things is every year we have a contract for services, looking volunteer fire departments to provide sort of fire rescue services. It's a county's responsibility, but we contract that sort of stuff to these volunteer fire departments. And so what, as a result of that, those fire departments submit budgets to the county. We review those budgets, you as commissioners, set those tax rates, determine the tax rates for each of those departments. And then again, we collect and distribute those revenues. And so as a part of the requirement of that contract, because we do require the fire departments to get a financial audit every year and to submit those audit results to the county. And as a result, I think this has been going on, I think we've required that now for at least every, the last 20 years, I think it's been since before 1999, we've required these audits. But for at least over the last decade, the finance department has been taking that financial information from each of those audits and has put them into a database. And so we have been, we have been tracking their financial information. And as a result, we really have developed several sort of analog ratios that we use to sort of assess the financial condition of each of the, of each of the fire departments. And so some background, there are, I believe, 19 fire departments that we contract with. 16 are nonprofit entities, and then three of them are embedded in other municipalities throughout the county. So last year, total revenues for all these fire departments was $24.4 million. And that, that 70% is a result of the property tax, of that tax rate that you set for those fire departments. 20% is, they get 20% of the revenue from self-tax distribution. And then the other revenue is a result of, some fire departments have ambulatory services and they get some EMS revenues on top of that. This is just a map highlighting, fire service districts sort of show you what the tax rates are. Really, the range of tax rates for each of these fire departments runs from anywhere from eight and a half cents all the way to 16 cents, with the mean or the average being somewhere around 12 cents. So there's seven ratios that we look at in the finance department. We're not going to talk about all seven of those ratios. I'm just going to briefly describe two of the ratios that we look at and we sort of feel like are the more important ones. And the first one is the operations ratio. And this really is just simply looking at the dimension, determining whether the annual revenues are covering the annual operating expenditures. Really, all this is, it's just taking the total revenues and dividing it by the total expenses. And really, what you want to see is you want to see a ratio of one, which basically says we are getting enough revenues in the annual, the annual operating expenditures. And so up here, what you see is, I know it's kind of hard to see these different fire departments, and that's why I've given you the presentation in front of you if you want to sort of look at the numbers. But basically, I'm showing you two fiscal years back to back. Cash flow, FY16 is on the left. Cash flow, the majority of those fire departments are getting the revenue in to cover their annual expenditures. A few less in 2017. And so when you have a ratio that is less than one, going with that show is just for that year, your resource of revenue, revenue shortfall. And that is why it leads us to, the second ratio we look at is really is, what are the reserves that these fire departments have in order to cover those shortfalls? Because if you don't have the revenue in that year, you have to, you have to get that money somewhere. So it's usually out of, out of your reserves. And so, you know, we as county government have been having the same discussion with you, the board, these last several years about, you know, what is sort of that right reserve to have? Because especially if you're receiving taxpayer funds, funding, you want to strike that balance between having enough reserves on hand to sort of manage those cash flows and contingency needs without any sort of over unnecessary tax revenues. And so we look at several factors that influence what is really sort of that appropriate reserve level. Really, it's the size of the organization, it's that volatility of revenues, the tax burden on our constituents, as well as looking at those environmental factors and those contingency options. So taking all those factors into account, you know, we in the finance department sort of like, what would be that appropriate sort of reserve level that you should have? Basically on these factors, you know, we sort of feel like that appropriate reserve level is anywhere between, you know, three months to a year worth of reserves. You know, I keep wanting to call it fund balance, because that is what we call it. But you need to keep in mind, I'm not referring to this fund balance, because fund balance is a very specific term to governmental accounting. And most of these fire departments, or all of these, most of all of these fire departments, 16 at least, are operating as a nonprofit, so they have a different accounting structure. So how do we measure what those reserves mean for them is by looking at their current assets to total operating expense ratio. And really what we're looking for, if we want something between three months and a year, we really want a ratio of 1 to 5 to 1. And so here, this next graph shows what that is. And this ratio is really sort of, is, shows really how solvent these fire departments are. And it's important, because we really want to know if these fire departments have enough resources available to withstand sort of a financial hardship, and then how long they actually can withstand. And so these two graphs, again, this is FY16 and FY17 data. Those things really, what we consider our sweet spot is anything in between those two vertical lines. So you'll see that most all of them have hit that mark. One thing that's important to note is that we are not wanting to make a judgment call on those departments that actually exceed those reserves, because again, we don't know the internal organs of these departments in. And I know that several of these departments have a specific plan on how, they may be saving money for an engine, or a major equipment, or they may have a substation for sake of purpose. So I really don't want to speak to those that may have a big reserve, because I suspect that in every one of those situations, they really, those funds are assigned for another reason. But where I do think is an area that we want to look at is to at least ensure that these fire departments at least have three months' worth of reserves on hand, because as we'll demonstrate here in a slide or two, their cash flow is sort of an unequal, it's unevenly distributed over the course of the year. So we want to make sure. And again, I also want to point out that these are, the numbers that we're looking at is a snapshot in time. And so you really don't want to look at these in an isolated situation. You really want to look at these really how things, how they trend over a period of time. We had a slide in here that sort of illustrated how these fire departments worked over a period of 10 years. It was a little bit complicated to sort of have to walk you through that. But trust me when I say, if you look at all these fire departments over a 10-year period of time, you will see, well, there may be some fire departments that have a lower reserve today. That necessarily wasn't the case a couple of years ago, and probably won't be the case in the future. So I just want to sort of point that out. Briefly, I want to talk about sort of revenue distribution, because the county does collect and distribute property tax to the fire departments. And the way we do it is, we do this on a monthly basis. We collect, we the county, collect property tax every day. Every day the taxpayers are paying their tax bills. And then once a month, we sort of sweep those accounts, and then we distribute what was in each of the respective fire department's accounts. We sweep those accounts and we distribute that to the fire departments. For self-tax, that actually comes from the state. The state collects it, collects it, they distribute it to us, we allocate it, and then once a month, we send that to the fire departments as well. So really, the fire departments from the county are getting a cash distribution once a month. And if you look to the right, you'll see a chart of how their revenues are received. And just like in the county government, the majority of their revenues, 52%, is received over a three-month period of time, that November, December, January, which is when most property tax collectors made their tax bills. And so there really is an unequal distribution of their revenues. And so the fire departments are receiving a big chunk of money at the beginning of the year, they're receiving some other money throughout the year, but they have to sort of make that money last through the year. And that can present challenges. And I think as we've sort of recently seen, heard of, that adds created some challenges for some fire departments to do. And so through this process, this committee we've worked on, and talking to some board members, and talking to the public, and you, the board member, and our board, we, we as finance sort of felt like that we should offer up, that there are options for revenue distribution. So one of those is, you know, a level distribution. We know at the beginning of our fiscal year, what our tax levy is, and we know with 99% uncertainty of what we are going to collect in those property taxes. And so there would be no reason why the county could not sort of take that, divide that amount by 12, and give equal distributions to the fire departments. Also, we could have sort of considered a variable distribution frequency, which just means, you know, right now, we're doing it once a month, maybe in the later months of the year, when we're not getting much, we could just increase the number of distributions we do in a month. And then finally, there's an option that we have been exploring, which is sort of a flexible contingency funding plan, which really just is, in the case of major catastrophic events, more unusual circumstances, you know, the county could sort of advance those revenues to the fire departments. Again, I think a good example of that, and it's sort of like the party rock situation, where fire departments had to use their own operating funds to go out and help fight this fire. FEMA was approved the funding, the funding reversion, but it really took a year to get that funding to the fire departments. So there would be no, there would be no reason why the county could sort of, as an intermediary, because that money comes to us anyways, we know we're going to get the money, we could go ahead and advance those funds back to the fire departments. Looking at those different options, we did sort of, this is just sort of lays out the pros and cons of each of those options. The monthly distribution is easiest to execute, but you know, there is a cash level imbalance. Then the other three levels, you know, we have that level of distribution, that would be something easy to do, except the county would have to advance those revenues early in the year. Again, not really a big situation for the county. We are a big organization, we have those funds, and we would be able to take that hit. And again, we're going to true up at the end of the year anyway, so at the end of the, at the end of the year, both organizations may hold. And then, you know, the pros and cons of the other, the variable distribution frequency, that is something that can be done. However, the, the impact of that would be sort of minor. But I think that flexible contingency funding is something that we might want to look at. The biggest con to that would be, we just have to determine what a qualifying event would be. But again, that would be something we could easily do, if that would be something that the fire departments would like us to do, or maybe something the board would want us to do. I'm just really sort of providing these sort of options if there is a situation where we would want to get some of these things. And then finally, I just want to talk about some other considerations, as we've been out in the community, as we've talked to the fire departments, the boards, citizen series, is that some of the other considerations that we might want to consider is, you know, I think we as the county can provide some county assistance training for the fire department board members. I know there's lots of turnover on some of these boards, and there's no reason why, you know, we are sort of the constant factor in a lot of this. We are the one who's contracting for the services. We have a level of expertise at the county that we can sort of offer some assistance, whether it becomes legal assistance, financial assistance, working with the fire departments. As well, you know, we regularly update our fire district agreements, and I think maybe some of the things we might want to consider in the future is maybe standardizing some of the financial reporting. We get pretty good information from that, there are two or three different types of financial reporting that we get that we'd like to see standardized. I've also heard that there are a few things that we might, as a county, will require in those fire department bylaws, that maybe we could consider that as a requirement in their bylaws. And as well as, I do sort of feel like, this is something I sort of feel strongly about, is that we should consider in all our service agreements, that we adopt some kind of operating reserve policy that the fire department should operate. And then, you know, this is not something that, we've worked with fire departments for many years, and we've collaborated with them on lots of efforts. And I think we just continue as we do before, just explore more ways where we can collaborate, whether it be through shared services. You know, currently right now, we do lots of shared services with MIT, but maybe might want to look at sharing services financial-wise, or HR-wise, legal-wise. But as well, I think something just as easy as leveraging the power of, excuse me, leveraging sort of our sort of communications PR infrastructure, and doing something just as easy as getting, raising the awareness of volunteer firefighter fees. So that is the end of that presentation. But one thing I did want to sort of highlight is the fact that, you know, like I said, we have been tracking the financial information for several years. And so we've been looking at it, this is something that we've been doing for years. And we provided it to the boards, prior boards on a pretty consistent basis. But I think one thing moving forward, we might as well take this information from your back office and sort of project it to the public. So one of the things that we're looking at doing is providing this sort of fiscal analysis tool to the fire departments. Since we get that information every year, since we have these ratios, what we're thinking within probably, by the time you get to the point where you start looking at their budgets, we will have this fiscal analysis tool that will be out on our transparency site, which will allow you to drill into each of the fire districts. From there, you would be able to see, you know, what their tax rates are, the history of those tax rates, you'd be able to see what the revenues and expenditures are. We probably can provide you a link to their financial statements. We can give you the number of calls for service. We could probably also do have links to their respective websites, so they can get more information on that. So this is something that we, we have a prototype, and if we had time, I would love to show it to you today. We really don't have that time today, but something over, I think the next several weeks that we would be able to get up to, that would be a very useful tool for you commissioners as you review the budget request and trying to decide what those fire departments need. But it's also a great tool for the fire departments and for the public, should they want some additional information. So that is my very quick high overview of fire departments. Again, I think this is going to be, if you have specific questions about specific fire departments, I think this tool that we're talking about here will be a really useful tool for you. So with that, we'll move into the next phase, which is a discussion of the firefighter pay. So I will turn it over to my chief.
Before we start, it's my understanding that about 2008, the former county manager instructed the fire chiefs that they could never raise the tax rate. You know, it's not, you know, we don't need to debate whether it happened or didn't happen, but that information, I know, kind of brought to you as commissioners. And so I think it's important to get more information about that. Also, I, as we do this, I'd like to see a breakdown of all of all they know of for nonprofit to non-profits, to see how that factors for the budget.
Absolutely. Allison, key announcements, make that, there's a pizza order.
Could y'all speak up? We can't hear you over here.
There's a, a precaution announcement beginning that, that there is, there's a pizza order, it's a plate, so that should show up at some point, so please help yourself.
Also, I've got a request for whoever's in charge of the lighting. You don't have to go from one extreme to the other. If you can, I think most people can see the screen, allows us also to see. So I have a, just for the lighting, whoever's in charge of it, you don't have to go all the way to our, for us to be able to see those screens. If you can just, maybe it'll probably be more pleasant, and also allows to be able to read the, to be able to read the, the candor of that, if I need to turn that thing up. All right. Thank you very much, again, for having us here today. A couple of things, as we go through this, some of the stuff, and one of the things that you as commissioners highlighted to us previously was that was on the firefighter pay. And so that is something that we have done some research with, the North Carolina Association of Fire Chiefs allowed us to participate with that and be able to derive some information out of there. With this, we also, some of the things that we're going to come up with and discuss, besides firefighter pay, cost of service, the EMS effects on fire service and unmandates, and but more importantly, also possible solutions. So before we, as we're presenting you with the problems that we're encountering, we also want to present you with optional solutions and some possible alternative funding. And so as we go through, through this, the pay studies, I said, derived from the information from North Carolina Association of Fire Chiefs, North Carolina Association of Fire Chiefs, and by the way, I just seen the pizza coming in, so rounding for the information there. Everybody else can go buy, get some more pizza, it's on the table. 10% of the departments in the state of North Carolina participate, we have about 12 of the fire departments in the state of North Carolina, and approximately 30% of those departments in North Carolina have some form of paid staff. So that's actually a pretty good participation ramp that we have in there. And the counties that was chosen all had some similarities with Buckland County. We chose Alamance, Cumberland, Durham, Forsyth, Guilford, Iredale, Johnston, New Hanover, Wade, because they all either had similarities with the fire service and the way the makeup of the fire service was in those counties, the population in those counties, the living wage, or the cost of living. And so with that, going into the firefighter, looking at the firefighter position, you'll see that in all of these slides, Buckland County is somewhat to substantially lower than the other 10 counties, or the other nine counties that was surveyed, and so that was used in the pay study. And so if you see this, the starting pay is in blue, the maximum pay is in red, so if you're pay scale, if you're looking at the pay scale, it goes from the, between the blue and the red. The engineer position is a, historically, that is a driver engineer, they take care of running the truck, getting the water on the fire and everything for it, so you see that that is also lower, but not as substantial as the firefighter. Supervisor, which would be for us considered a company officer, is also lower. The closest to that is probably Alamance County, that you'll see there. And then the manager, which is usually a, our shift manager, or a district manager, again, that's close to Alamance, but the rest of the counties are elevated above that. We also have in here the deputy or assistant chief, and that is substantially lower than the other nine counties as well as fire chief. Now, one of the things I want to tell you, we have a, we have a couple of departments in Buckland County that the fire chief's not a full-time position, so that does bring our numbers down just a little bit, but that's only two positions out of the county that was used in the study. The rest of them were the full-time position, and that is substantially lower than, than you see in a lot of the others. The next page that you see here, going down the left-hand side, is the Buckland County average pay, and that's the starting and ending, so the 29,358 for firefighter, is the minimum, 41,906 is the max, so that's your pay range between 29 and 41. Then the next, the next column is the average that Buckland County includes, that's using all 10 counties, and there is a $4,355 deficit between the average pay of Buckland County firefighters and the average pay of all of the 10 counties. The next column that you see there is the average pay without Buckland County, excluding Buckland County, just the other nine counties, because as you can see with the information, there was disparity in Buckland County with all of, in all the positions, and so we showed that without that. And so as we go down through here, just looking at the minimums, for firefighters, about $4,300, for engineers, $2,400, supervisor, about $6,000 for the starting pay, manager, it's about $8,000 difference, for a deputy or assistant chief, about $12,000 difference, and fire chief, about a $27,000 difference on the starting pay on all of those positions just, or in that they're standing with Buckland County. The next thing we wanted to look at was cost of living. New Hanover County is the same as Buckland County in cost of living. All of the other counties was, looking at the cost of living was less than Buckland based on the information that we were able to obtain. And so we do have a significant higher cost of living in Buckland County, which avers to many of our firefighters, and the fire departments live outside of Buckland County and work inside Buckland County. So a lot of our firefighters are actually from McDowell, Haywood, Henderson, and Yancey, different counties outside of Buckland that's coming in, because it is more affordable housing in those areas, and so they're, they're living there, coming in and working in Buckland County, which presents as a problem on New Year's Eve, when you get a nice storm, and we need those firefighters close by to be able to go to work, and they're stuck in other counties, and we can't even get them here because of the disaster that's occurred. The next thing we did is average living wage. And what this is based off of is, as I'm sure all of you are aware, the MIT information that's out there, they, they have different areas in the living wage, it is all depending on how many people is in the household, and how many is working. And so we took all of those numbers, averaged them out for each one of the counties. And if you'll see, Buckland and Alamance are very close and similar in the living wage, and Forsyth and Guilford is significantly lower, and I say significantly, we're only looking at about $2,000 difference, it's the maximum difference in the living wage. But Forsyth and Guilford is lower than Buckland, but all of the rest of the counties' living wage is higher. The next couple of slides, or the next couple of pages you have me hand out, I'm not going to go over all of these, but you'll see, this is each department broke down by each department to green. If it's highlighted in green there, that means that they are meeting the average of the 10 counties in that, and if it's not in green, then they're all below average. And that's the different positions by each department. So it is kind of individual, so now took each department and put that out where the, for the average pay of all of the, of the entire department, and for a firefighter. And out of that, out of the 19 departments, three need minor adjustments to their pay scale, whereas 16 need significant adjustments to the pay scale. So you can look down through there and see what the averages is for all of the positions in those departments, and for the position of firefighter, and see how that, how that plays out. All the departments offer some form of health insurance. The percentage of department pays towards family varies between 0 to 100%. 11 of the 19 departments offer some type of supplemental or accidental insurance. 12 of the 19 departments offer life insurance. Only five departments are on and are eligible for the state retirement system. And that is the three municipal departments, plus Skyland and West Buckland, because they were able to get into the state retirement system back in the 80s, and now the rules of the state retirement system do not allow for that. There has been some attempts with that, with state legislation, to be able to get fire departments in, we have been working on that, and it's actually an IRS issue, so it's on the federal level of doing that. So we're, but we will still continue to work on that in the state legislation. Two of the 14 departments offer other retirement plans to substitute for the state retirement, and 11 of the 19 departments offer 401K. Buckland County fire departments, on average, are between 2,400 and 51,000, below the average pay scale of fire departments in the state of North Carolina, that was used in this pay study of the 10 counties. 16 departments need significant adjustments to pay scale and or starting pay positions. Three departments need minor adjustments. Now with this, some of the things, when you're looking at the pay, one of the, one of the issues with that is, we've got, that is one of our significant issues, is pay. issues with that is we've got, that is one of our significant issues is pay. We recognize that, we see that, the fire departments have done, have historically been very conservative and for their communities, for the constituents, and try to keep that down. And however, one of the things to be able to, be able to get that pay where it needs to be is going to require additional revenue. So as we go through this, one of the things that I want to make you aware of is with that additional revenue option, we also want to put out, as we said, some possible solutions that might be able to minimize the impact on the constituents, whether that be through other types of service fees or other things that could be brought out. And so we'll talk about that towards the end. But as far as, and this is going to be dependent on each individual department, how this affects each individual department, how each individual department needs to address this, and with this, for the most part, looking in a lot of departments, it's about, probably, you can probably look at about two, about two cents is about what the cost is going to be to get those averages up where they need to be, and with a two hundred fifty thousand dollar house, that's about fifty dollars per homeowner. And so next, we have the cost of motor service, I'm sorry.
Fifty dollars a year.
About fifty dollars a year, yes.
You said, Mom.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, fifty dollars a month, fifty dollars a month on that. So we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go through. Thank you for your correction. Randy Reckwith and Jeff.
I want to make sure, is this on? Okay. Before we move on past a, I'm looking towards him, and one I want to thank you for this information that I looked at it forward, it's, it's, it's a very good job. You know, we're looking at, we're talking about pay, it's a very sensitive issue, requires a lot, a lot of discussion and analysis, but a lot of times we'll gather information, and there's not a solid clear recommendation, say for example, for the entry level of pay, you know, what would that be exactly, what would it be, how much, you know, what it costs, you know, in certain departments and things like that. And as we think about these things going forward, you know, it'd be good to have, I'm sure the fire departments will have the detailed information too, to be able to have that to make these, you know, whatever decisions might be made.
But isn't, isn't it a front that the two cents, going up to two cents or fifty dollars a year on a two hundred fifty thousand dollar house, wouldn't make up that difference?
In, in some departments, some of the ones that I've talked, and that's going to be on the individual basis, based on that department and what their needs are, because as I said, some departments need significant adjustments to their retirement pay, or some of them just need minimal adjustments, and so each department's going to have to look at that and determine what their needs are going to be, and we're going to provide all this information, not just the information for Buckland County, but the entire pay study to all the departments so that they can look at that and see if it, what is applicable to me.
And then what percentage of firefighters outside of the county do you think you're going to guess?
If I was, if I was to guess, I would say probably forty, probably about forty percent, thirty to forty percent.
And, um, one last question. What's, so we know nine twenty is the starting pay for some, so what, let's, we've talked about this before, what's the starting pay at Burger King, Chick-fil-A, fast food restaurants?
Chick-fil-A, I'm not sure, but I know Chick-fil-A on Merriman Avenue just posted last week, it was thirteen dollars an hour.
You need to do something, we can't keep talking about it like you said.
And I'll tell you, and this is something I've saved until the end, I'll go ahead and say, say now, our most important thing amongst all of these fire chiefs in this room is protecting our community. To best protect our community is to have quality people doing a quality job, and for them to be passionate about what they do, and for them to be passionate about what they do, we've got to make sure that we're giving them what they need so they can survive and be able to take care of their families. We have a lot of firefighters in this county that if they are a single family, if they're a single working family, they're on poverty level.
Right, right.
If that, in other words, if only the firefighter works and the spouse does not work, they're at poverty level and they're eligible for government assistance.
All I know is, I became a commissioner in two thousand and twelve, and we're talking about this salary then, and how many firefighters go to sleep at night or go out on call worrying about paying their rent, and it's absurd and absolutely wrong.
And I don't know of any firefighter that, that only works, it's fire department, all of them work from all kinds of jobs, and so whenever you look at a firefighter position, it's fifty-six hour a week that they're working, and most of them are averaging about eighty hours a week because of the jobs that they're doing on the side.
And I want to say before, before we go on, that the firefighters, supervisors, every department in this room in Buckland County have done an amazing job. I mean, that's what this is all about, is an appreciation for those departments and looking at how we can, how we can be better. Don't think we have to carry easy bet with us all the time, give it to Sam, you know, increase, there's a lot, a lot of ways to achieve these goals, in a very, very, very responsible manner. I just love this information, the only reason this is here is to, is always good to have information that is processed and made recommendations. I know, I know we do, I'm the one that had to say, you're excited to walk in town around this, and it's just a great opportunity to get to hear this information.
And somehow, I'll add that, that all of, all of these organizations work together seamlessly. And Sunday, I don't understand why it was Sunday, Sunday was the hottest day of the year up until Sunday. I think today's topic, but Sunday was hottest day of the year, and we had more structured fires on Sunday in the county than any other day, and every department was going to other departments, and that's what we do on a regular basis, and everybody was backfilling other stations, and we're going all over, we've had fire trucks all over this county, going somewhere helping somebody else out because of work, all of these people do on a daily basis and work together.
One question. Who looks basically, if you lose a firefighter, what's it cost to retrain?
As far as, as far as doing the retraining and equipment, because it, obviously if it was, if it was me and my equipment, it's not saying I'm going to fit somebody else, and that's one of the things that Randy's going to highlight is the cost of equipment, but you're looking, I would say probably between eight and twelve thousand dollars from getting somebody from square one, replacing that one all the way back over again.
All right, if there's some point that somebody can talk about, I'm responding to not.
Go ahead. Good afternoon, folks. Glad everybody's taken a little bit of time in their afternoon to come see your presentation. Start off, it, it is said that emergencies are a local problem with a local solution. Yet the cost of everything associated with fire EMS response has grown far, grown at a rate far exceeding the inflation rate for the cost of the index. Most of the added costs are due to increased safety features. Problem lies, over ten years, the cost of both have risen anywhere from forty to seven hundred and fifty percent and more, putting replacement of this equipment outreach for some departments for a minimal, putting in awful years. Grants have offset the cost in the last few years, but grants are dependent and far few between. We also participate in GBOs across the United States to help with driving down the cost of operations. So what we're going to talk about here, basically to outfit somebody by a woods fire, looking at stationware and a structure fire, and then we're going to talk about costing engines and trucks. As you can see, two thousand and seven, for a wild being here, roughly a thousand seventy-nine dollars, for two thousand seventeen, we're over sixty-three hundred dollars. It's an increase of a neighborhood of about forty percent, or actually a hundred and seventy-five percent, should look at my own size. So, as you note through this, as you look at the slides or look at your presentation, how there is a radio in a lot of these, radios are key to be able to take and put anybody in the woods, put anybody in the structure, or answer calls, because you have to have the communications with your other, other firefighters or with the other staff. Also putting somebody in structure here, two thousand and seven, just over seventy-one hundred dollars, and two thousand and seventeen, we're over forty thousand dollars. Again, that's about a fifty percent increase. Stationware, actually, we don't pay for place stationware at all, go back to the turnout here, look up at the bottom, gear has to be replaced every ten years, and that's due to regulations set forth by the National Fire Protection Association, who is an industry standard for fire service. Station uniforms will replace these, I know in our station and all that, as needed, which would outfit somebody, but to get somebody up and running, it's going to cost you about fifty-nine hundred dollars in two thousand and seventeen versus twelve hundred dollars in two thousand and seven. Here's a big experience. You notice the footnote at the bottom, figure do not allow, do not include angle tested service or cost of fuel. Life expectancy is maxed out at twenty years on the unit. Most, most all these departments are keeping each at least twenty years or more, as long as one's got several pieces of equipment. We've got one that's a nineteen eighty-seven law, and we still run, actually ran a structure fire last time. So, again, the cost of these things are dramatic. As you can see, base cost of four hundred and forty thousand dollars versus six hundred thousand dollars in use rate. The cost of just the equipment to go on, which is a value that pays cost. If you take into account, a lot of the stations, they buy commercial chassis. You can draw from the cost of those, buy about two hundred thousand dollars, you can go with a commercial chassis, but if you go with a commercial chassis, the firefighters are able to transport all of them. One other piece of information I've got here that came in late, as far as tankers, which are water tankers, average cost of that in two thousand and seventeen was three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, for two thousand and seven was two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Ladder, which I know Ashville, I think, is in the process of beating out ladder at this point, average cost of two thousand and seventeen was a median fifty thousand dollars. Back ten years ago, it was six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. If you go to the middle bay of Blackpool, one point three billion dollars versus three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Again, these costs are driving basically the operation. The guys joke with me, they're talking all the time while they're about, you know, buying this, buying that, or asking, I'll tell you, research it out, we've got the best possible price we can, because we just can't go out and buy whatever, whatever we want. They laugh at it because they'll come with something, and I'll say, I think I sent a coupon for that the other day, the plate. I click coupons for the fire station, because I click coupons at home. I treat the fire station's money as it is now, because I want to extend it as far as I can. That's the reason you said some of the grabs that you've seen, all that, we're in the position that we are in, not on top, not on the bottom, we are surviving alone. For the longest time, we were stuck at ten seconds, and that, that drove, drove the cost of a lot of things out of our range. The process of beating, hopefully beating out the spring, the substation, we all, the process of ladder needs assessment to help achieve prevent from Ashville, which we know, we no doubt can elect, and so we're with another million dollar purchase for being, plus we have a truck that needs to be, it's comfortably to be replaced also. So there's some.
Do only a firefighter do, does each firefighter have all three of these, these sets of clothes?
Yes, in our, in our department, in our department, with the paid staff, whether it be full-time, part-time, have all that, volunteers typically have all that too, depending on their certifications, if they're certified or have been in a lot of that class, if they're not there on fire service and all that, does a lot of free time to be on the line unless they have fire service class and fire service license and all that, just because of the protections and the liabilities and all that.
So, yes. Yes. So did you want to have that, right?
Yes.
So as we analyze this, the information, we have the radio, we have three times.
Yes.
We have one radio. So you can just look at that, twenty-six thousand, but it's really probably sixteen thousand to an outfit of firefighters.
And, and isn't it right that, this is regulation, this is not to choose to do this, you're, you have to do it.
Yes, when it comes to requirements, when it comes to replacements on gear and the trucks and all that, that is all stipulated, that is all regulated by the National Fire Protection Association. There are guidelines, they are not per se standards, but rules we have to follow, but if something wasn't happened to one of our fire departments in fire, we did not, we'd at least try to adhere to these guidelines and standards, and we would be in more financial burden than, than our insurance companies could bear.
My name's Joe Justice, I'm the fire chief out of Ridge Creek, and I'm going to give you a quick rundown on fire departments that operate EMS systems. We've got six areas in North Carolina that operate on paramedic level, trying to get us caught back up on time. There's two different ways that fire departments handle employing paramedics. One is a paramedic that's cross-trained as a firefighter, that means he's certified as a firefighter, he's also certified as a paramedic. The other is the fire service-based system where the responder only goes on EMS calls. You ask what the difference on that is, is pay and trying to make the pay. EMS workers, if they do, only EMS work is required by Fair Standard Labor Act to be paid overtime after forty hours. Firefighters typically are paid on a fifty-six hour work week at two hundred and twelve hours. So we're trying to work out, this is all fairly new for us, but where they'll get equal pay for doing both firefighting and paramedic work. Fire department offices are not a new thing, with the exception of Fairview and Skyland, the other departments have been providing a primary response and transport. Ridge Creek since nineteen seventy, Fairview's had an ambulance in seventy-two, Rossonson in sixty-four, Lesnarson in sixty-eight, and Barnesville's in sixty-four, and Skyland had an ambulance in seventy-eight. The only exception there is Skyland and Fairview, where recently they started covering their fire districts and transport. Everyone else has been the primary EMS unit for their fire districts since those days that they've provided. This was talking about the pay issues with paramedic versus firefighters. Paramedics on the forty-hour work week and the firefighters are on the fifty-six hour work week. If you've got a paramedic firefighter, he's essentially doing double train. He has to keep his certification up as a fully certified paramedic, and he has to keep his certification up as a fully certified firefighter. So we're trying to get that equaled out where they're going to get compensated to be both. If we don't do that, then they're going to pick one or the other. Immediate issues we're having effect were just like Buckland County, you have accidents, there's a shortage of paramedics to fill open slots. That is statewide, I don't think any county you have to in the state of North Carolina, I want to tell you, there's not a shortage of paramedics to fill open slots. New healthcare payments, North Carolina, when the Affordable Healthcare Plan came under a fusion mandate. Uh, new healthcare payments, payments, uh, North Carolina, when the Affordable Healthcare Plan came under a fusion Medicaid expansion, that dropped a Medicaid patient to sixty dollars or a hundred and twenty dollars for an ambulance bill. That is all you get paid, you get either sixty, or if it's advanced life support, you get paid a hundred and twenty. That's far less than the roughly five hundred dollars that, that you're billing out for. Medicare increases, there's been no Medicare increases in several years for any EMS systems. Hospitals now became the primary patient care facilities, so they're at full capacity. So, our turnaround time is just to get the patient off of bed or leave. So, we may send an ambulance to Mission Hospital and wait one hour to get them transferred. Well, that's one hour that somebody else may need help that we can't respond to. Uh, EMS, the hospitals or the EMS equipment is costly. One example is, is the defibrillators that are on every fire engine in Bunkin County, it costs about fifteen hundred. Every EMS drug defibrillator costs about forty thousand dollars. Uh, the difference is, is our heart monitors, and, and when I say ours, I mean every paramedic drug in Bunkin County, which is Mission, uh, medic, whoever, they transmit all that data directly to the doctors. So, when we hook that machine up to you, the doctor will see that in real time and will push the transmit button. Our drug shortages have driven up prices. We're not exempt from things that the hospitals are on the news. Anytime that a drug is shortage, you can guarantee when it is finally available, it's stolen. The opioid epidemic has caused several problems. The cost of Narcan has become unreal. It's went from ten dollars to forty-five, fifty, to almost a hundred dollars if you can get it. And then the other toll that we're seeing now is we're treating trips for the same patient and the stress on the EMS worker. When we have certain patients that we go to three or four times that are in cardiac arrest from opioid overdose, that's wearing down on approvals, that's why they're getting out of one of the jobs. Uh, North Carolina Office of Emergency Medical Services regulates everything that every ambulance in North Carolina has to carry, the standards we all have to meet, and we're now at a national standard. We've made a national standard across the United States. The, they can come in tomorrow and give us a new mandate for new piece of equipment, and by next week, or whatever the mandate is, we have to have that on a truck, have a train, and have it work. Uh, citizens of Bunkin County understand that they will get the closest EMS unit that will handle, can handle our emergencies. So, if you live in Black Mountain, you may get a Ridge Creek ambulance. If we're the only ambulance that's the closest ambulance, we will send the closest ambulance. That has always been the rule for nine-one-one, Sam. Uh, medication used in emergency situations, got to be climate-controlled now. So, that means when these trucks go up here only zero-three days, Mission Hospital, they have to sit outside and run. Anytime they're outside and not in the station, to be plugged up, they've got to be running. You've got to keep the drugs in a certain temperature. Everything has to be climate-controlled. Mission Hospital stopped restocking EMS units, so the unit must be returned to base and be restocked. So, if we have three or four cars and don't get back to base, we have to put that ambulance out of service until we go back and get restocked. At initial, it was a Medicare law, uh, it's since been rescinded, but Mission still doesn't restock their trucks. I don't even know, been in talks with them for that since it's been rescinded. But certainly that's a big, big cost factor for us, and it was a, um, time, is keeping trucks out of service. Uh, past ten years, the cost have doubled, like everything else, but reimbursement remains the same. It's just, we're in the same boat here, everyone's in, in the United States, really. We've got a healthcare system we're going to have to work on. We're trying to do the best we can to make sure citizens of Bunkin County get the closest help and the best possible help regardless who it is. Any questions on that?
Okay, I'm Anthony Bell, I'm the chief of the Swallow Fire Department, and I'm here to talk about some unfunded mandates that are on the list for the town colleges. And I don't know if unfunded mandates is the right word. The reason it's put up there is we just want you to know that there's things that are driving what we do. One of the things right now is, it's going to go at this time, I've been inspected by the department insurance. They're inspecting thirteen fire departments throughout this, next week. And the department insurance comes in, and they look over everything, look from our charter all the way to the equipment that we carry. We have to be a rated fire department in this state in order for our citizens to get a break on their insurance. If we are not a rated fire department, they say what's not an unprotected, uh, insurance rate, and that means it's astronomical to call. Department insurance will come in, they'll tell us what is recommended for our fire departments, the equipment that we need to carry, the personnel that we need to have, but it's all based on what the National Fire Protection Association is the recommendations. And I want to talk to you about maybe three of those right now. One of them is NFBA seventeen-ten, which basically tells us how many personnel we're supposed to have. And that is driven by what the department insurance says we're supposed to have. So, therefore, that increases the cost that we have when you have the volunteer fire services decline over the last decade by twelve percent. More and more departments going to pay staff in order to cover that standard, therefore increasing the cost, uh, for the fire department. Nineteen oh-one is already been mentioned, nineteen oh-one is basically standard on how we build fire apparatus. It covers everything from the emergency light equipment on there, to the fire protection agency requirements on the diesel it puts off of. So, that jacks up the price of that truck. Now, we can go back and say, well, the department insurance says you just need one truck and one tanker. Yes, if you want to stay at a certain rate. In order for us to lower that rate down, we may need two trucks, two tankers. We may need that ladder truck, we may need that tractor station. So, all this is driven by DOI and NFBA. And the last one, talk about the NFBA standard, is the turnout gear. We talked about the sixteen thousand dollars that it costs to suit up a firefighter. But now, we all know that firefighting is a dangerous job. This is your heat and the stress put on the body, but then you add the fact that the cancer-causing agents that things are made of, that now to get home, the turnout gear is firefighters. NFBA is now recommending two sets of turnout gear per firefighter. What happens is, when firefighter goes into structural fire this morning, ideally, he needs to take that turnout gear off, put it in a washing machine, let it wash, let it dry. And we're not talking about this regular washing machine, there's a special washing machine that goes along with that. And then, at, at most departments, mine included, I don't have an extra set for him to put in. So, I either don't follow the standard, because I'm going to be short of firefighter, or I try to get his gear washed and get it dried while he's on duty, because I don't have another set to put in. But that is a push across the nation now, and at the, at the state level, they have increased the, uh, they're now considering cancer as a line of duty death. So, if we're considering it a line of duty death, then the fire department's going to have to figure out how we want to prevent that. And one of the things we've got to do is we've got to try to get all our firefighters in the two sets a year. If not, they're going to have to take that stuff, and we, we don't let them come into the base, are they, they really wear that gear? We try to keep it off the couches. So, there's just certain things that have been driven that the fire departments have to do in order to make it safe for our firefighters. And then, the last thing I want to talk about is I want you to understand the services that we provide to those untaxed properties. I know that's been another question that brought up a lot of that. Each district probably has certain properties that are untaxed. But it doesn't necessarily mean that the fire service doesn't respond to those properties. And so, we look at our expense side of the response to those properties, but revenue side does not offset that expense because there's nothing collecting. And to me, I'm not really sure, I understand the untaxed part of it as far as property tax. But the service that we provide is almost like a service fee per second. It's almost like you're going to need the fire service, hopefully going to need it, but some are going to need the fire service more than others. And they're giving it for nothing, while the taxpayer over here who's paying the tax doesn't cause. I've been paying taxes in my district for forty-nine years now, and I don't owe my own one once. So, I've given thousands of dollars to the Swallow Fire Department and used them one time. And we got some untaxed properties that have used us on average a hundred and sixty times a year. So, those are some of the things that, you know, if we look at that ratio that Tim was talking about, the revenues are not going to continue with the expenses if we continue to go down the path that we're looking. You talk about raising the tax by two cents. To me, I would like to see some type of ratio as to if everybody in the fire district was paying the same thing, it would have been a two cent increase or would it be a half a cent increase if we all were on the same wavelength? I look at it as an insurance policy. I pay the car insurance every year, I've never used it, but if I need to, it's there. If you pay a tax or a service fee, you may not ever use the fire service, but it's there. And everybody's on the same wavelength. It's not just on the backs of those taxpayers for the untaxed properties. I don't know if that's a possible avenue or not is, but I do know that it may succeed, because some of us, on average, a hundred and fifty times a year, we're all using untaxed properties.
So, um, for instance, in the, in our end of the county, um, Ridge Crest, you know, how, which is a non-for-profit. Um, you know how many call, and it's a conference center holding, um, conferences, and so people, large amount of people come in from out of the area, you know, and we have to respond.
The, the town of Black Mountain covers Ridge Crest, and, uh, my partner up here, John Wilson, talks, he had some numbers, so, John, the fire department itself responded. Okay, he's, he's pulling it up right now.
I, I, you know, it doesn't, it, it doesn't make sense to me. Um, it's considered a non-for-profit, but it's a conference center, and adds to the population, and, um, frequently called for service.
But Ridge Crest was sixty-three times from the fire department?
Sixty-three times from Black Mountain Fire Department.
And ninety-three times from all the agencies.
And ninety-three times from the agency, so the other agencies would be Bunkin County Sheriff's Office, and, 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 yes, Bunkin County EMS. But EMS would offset their, their response up there with the field, the person. But the fire department, the expense to the, the fire department would come from the other people who are paying that tax. And the expense to the sheriff's office would come from all of the county taxpayers, because you, you fund the sheriff's office.
And what about partners?
On average, we get about a hundred and sixty-five times each to, 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 to the armed armed company. Now, the other thing is, is I know that just recently, there's a planning meeting on a piece of property in Swallow that, currently about now we didn't tax on it, and we haven't responded to that property in ten years. And all we responded to it then was for structural fire passes on it. So, it's been sitting for ten years, maybe. But the planning department's here to have a meeting based on untaxed, untaxed entity that's going to come in and want to buy it. So, now, once they purchase it, then the revenue is generated, it's gone. So, now, theory is, it's going to be like a medical facility, which is going to increase the expense of us going down there to answer the nine-to-one calls, even though the revenue is not going to offset the expense in current. So, if you're going to see the ratios continue to go in the opposite direction, if we have to continue to use reserves and offset expenses for these services that we're providing for people that are not collecting the medical.
Well, Highland Farms, they're given, they, that took how much off the tax rolls? Highland Farms, given, because you responded, given, Highland Farms, right?
Uh, we responded last year a hundred and sixty-one times from the fire department. There was three hundred and forty-five times from all the agencies.
But, yeah, when you respond to Black Mountain Center, which is a state facility, you get reimbursed?
Yes, all state facilities that we, uh, that are in our financial state, that's a ratio that actually will pay the fire department. Now, that ratio is nowhere near, but the cost of going there is, but it does generate a little bit. I know in Swallow, we generated now nine hundred dollars in revenue, and so, but unfortunately, I can't tell you what the state profit is that we are covering. I just think that it's down at the, uh, both, uh, part of our natural resources, and all the automobiles we have there. That's, that's always, I think, we did that, so. But, again, we haven't responded, we don't decide a routine that we go there. But we routinely go to some other places, and, you know, this is, this is one. Now, I don't go to that, I have no idea what this should be, to be that. And it's not a situation where I'm up there standing and saying, everybody, our fair share, and all the, non-tax properties are paid, well, you know, the churches should pay, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, as we initially see, the ones who are using the service compared to the ones who are not using, as to what that ratio would be. So that if we do want to raise firefighter pay, this is my opinion, if we do want to raise firefighter pay, we do want to make sure we meet all these requirements, it's not all about the wrong of our citizens.
Right.
Not all of them.
And, and technically, you're called a service, services in your-
Yes, we changed that here in county, uh, two thousand and fifteen, we signed a, when, when the statute arrived, sixteen, we're now firing in ambulance service districts.
So, do any place, can any places, uh, implement an emergency services fee?
I don't know, that's-
I, I don't think so, I mean, I think the conversation here is about what's exempt by, uh, the Constitution, and primarily chapter one of five of the general statutes, because we're talking about exempted from taxation by legislation now.
But we're not calling it a tax, we're calling it a service fee.
Well, the service, the service districts, we switched from the old chapter sixty-nine fire response districts that were voted on to the service districts to allow more taxes to be levied. But that doesn't fix this problem, that just, the fire departments aren't stuck at the ten cents or fifteen cents that they used to be. Now, it's the room from like fifty-three up to a dollar fifty that's available for taxation. This is the same conversations they have every year with the legislature, starts considering new exemptions or how to raise caps, and the tax officers are screaming, how do we, how are we going to adjust for that?
But if it was, if, if it was a service fee, clearly a service fee for calls, how does that affect?
I think you've just given it a different name, um, because if it's Fire and Ambulance Rescue Service District, that's just a vehicle for the county to afford those services in that district. So, I think it would require legislation to, uh, perhaps say that these entities can be exempt from real profit taxation on the local government level, but maybe they would be taxable for Fire and Ambulance Rescue Services.
The, the rest of, you know, down here, the fire insurance versus fire tax, we've, you've already heard about how we are, uh, the department insurance company, they regulate this, and on average, right now, classification in Bunkin County is five. So, it's saving millions of dollars to our citizens and, uh, in their insurance rates. And the fire insurance versus fire tax, basically, the fire tax is collected, it's given to the departments. The department chooses as their source of revenue in order to try to meet some of these requirements that, forth by DOI and NFBA. In hopes that we can keep the insurance rate down. And those things kind of go hand in hand, so the lower the fire tax, the less its ability to do the services that we need to, therefore, it would raise the insurance premiums. And then, if you keep the fire tax a little bit up higher, we can do the services, then it kind of keeps the insurance premiums down. So, they actually do, they work together. And then, we've talked about the, uh, working together, that's something that, I mean, when we met in the spring, how we called it Bunkin County Way, if we met every NFBA requirement, the taxation, it would be so high that we'd be unbearable. So, we have to rely on each other, and that's why we go from, we're automating Black Mountain, they're automating Swallow. It's the only we can do, but we don't, we don't have enough personnel to do it, so.
Hey, I have a, one more question. If, um, if there were additional revenue from, you know, from whatever source, uh, to help strengthen firefighter pay, I mean, I think the benefits of that would be for themselves, but in terms of, um, the insurance rating, it wouldn't necessarily make an adjustment there, right? I mean, that's just, unlike, you know, more equipment and things like that that might trigger a change on the insurance rating, uh, doing more to support compensation for the, for the employees, that's probably not going to affect the insurance rating.
It probably would not affect if you did the ones that are currently there, but if, if other, other sources- But if other sources of funding was to generate additional revenue where you might be hiring another one, then that could possibly do it there. But just to say everything across the board, I mean, now we're just going to take care of the ones who are there as of today. It wouldn't have any effect on that at all.
As far as recruitment and retention goes, then you're going to be able to increase that recruitment and retention, bringing more people in, which would help out with your insurance rate because you're able to shore up some of those. Because you're going to need, if you get the pay where it needs to be, then you've got part-time people that's wanting to come in. You've got volunteers wanting to be part-timers hopefully, to where that now you're starting to grow your base back up because they see a path to the future. And so all of that, no, sorry.
Sorry. I think if I shared prior, I can mention that there was eighteen thousand, I have a question about eighteen thousand dollars to train?
About eight to twelve.
Eight to twelve to do. So anyhow, you, you know, you're doing, you reduce turnover, you save money.
Exactly. If you're not having to regenerate or invisible time, you're saving that part of it, so you can get that money. And we should measure turnover. And we should measure turnover, we should calculate that number. Because if you're keeping people and if you can give money, you can save.
I'd give you an exact number on, or a much closer number on that, that's just coming up top of mind. A couple of things, we talked about options. And I won't try to get this finished up real quick because I know that those other pieces come in subsequently, it's up to the. Sales tax is, currently we are getting a portion of the sales tax, but that is, if we're looking at other options other than increasing fire tax, because as we sit and talk about all of this stuff, the last thing that we want to do is burden our constituents anymore with any increase in taxes. And so we want to throw out some other options. However, that might be the only option at this time until we can explore other options and make those viable options. So I think sales tax is something, I don't know if that's real viable, want to be able to extend that in. Maybe it's also something that usually expires after a period of time. Something that would require county ordinance, this might be able to minimize some of that is a motor vehicle accident service fee where we're charging for motor vehicle accidents out here on I twenty-six, I forty, western highway, highway twenty-five, wherever it's at. If somebody has a vehicle crash, then you're billing their insurance kind of before that. On the flip side of that, if somebody's, if somebody, is that just adding to the burden of insurance? Is the other question of that. So whenever you look at you increasing insurance by charging for those things. Now, there are service fees that's built into your, every policy. If you look at your policy, there is money set in there for an emergency services fee for responding to a call. The only problem is when we look at this and the number of motor vehicle accidents that we have per year in Buckingham County, that's not going to get the total amount of money that's necessary to get the firefighter pay, especially in every fire district, but it might reduce that down actually, might not that is. Something else might be doing something on permit service fees and increasing a cost down on permits whenever permits are issued because people are getting services, they're getting fire protection while those buildings are being built. For example, it's an apartment complex and they don't have to pay for it until it's completely done. They're still getting services on while it's under construction, so that might be an opportunity. And then what we talked about, Anthony just talked about non-tax property service fees, if there's an opportunity there. And that's something that might perhaps look into and determine that. And then the last thing that we have is the fire tax itself. But we want to explore those alternative options, that's something that I don't think we can solve today, but it's something that we can work with the county and look at alternative options. Most of these do, would require ordinances by the county commissioners to put in play. But I think it's some options that we can look at and explore and see what it is. The greatest thing in the information that we have brought to you today is to understand that as we have a systemic problem, we are also looking for systemic solutions in the firefighter pay and the increase in costs from NFBA and some of these other places. But we also have, we also want you to understand that it's also individualistic problems as well. And that's for each one of those boards and the fire chief to look at and determine how to best meet, how to best come up with a solution for their needs. And so that's something that's going to have to be done in each fire district to come in. But we're able to arm them with that information so that they can work towards that. Last thing, all of these people that you see sitting up here on this side of the room, number one priority is protecting people at Buckingham County. That's their number one priority. To do that to the best of their ability is by having good people that do that for them. And people that are passionate about their job and can afford to do their job. And that's the number one priority that we have. If we can take care of our people, they can take care of the community, and that's what we're here for. And with that, I'll leave to any other further questions, or I'll go into four bits.
I want to comment. Thank you. Pretty depressing. We ask firefighters to devote themselves one hundred percent to their job. One hundred percent, one hundred and fifty percent. We're running away from fires, they're running right to it. And yet, we can't give them resources to live? We, we have firefighters living in the poverty rate. And I know we want to explore all options, but to go back to that fire tax, when you say if we raised it two cents as a fire tax for a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, it would be an increase to that homeowner of fifty dollars a year. Now, people go out to dinner at least once a year, and dinner is more expensive than that. To me, that, short of those other things, I don't see how anybody can look themselves in the mirror without trying that. Because continuing to have firefighters living in poverty rate in this community, well, they can't afford it to you, is uncomfortable to us and we're not doing what we need to do. But thank you and thank you again for all that you do.
Thank you. All right. So, Commission, this is great information. Thanks to everyone who put this together, Tim, all the guys from the fire districts, this was super informative. So I'm really glad we did this. Obviously, we can't much take through, we're not going to solve it all today, but this will be a good way to help them as we start to go through our budget process to take through the different, the different ways we can get assets and issues. So this was, this is one of the most informative presentations that we've had on this session, so thanks so much. Commission, do you guys want to keep plowing ahead or do we have to take a quick break before we've got the next item? It's on the EMS piece, right? So do you guys want to take a break or keep? All right, let's take a tentative break, we'll start back after a minute. So during any prayers or meetings, thanks for all you've done in the county, I'm very happy.
Now, I think I'm all, Prince Chairman, Commission, it's an honor to be here. Glad we've got a big enough room to have this meeting here. Anyway, we've got a couple of people that with me today, we've got BJ Freeman, my administrative assistant, who's done a lot of work on putting all this stuff together. And Johnny Wilson, who's our nine-one-one supervisor, he's going to be talking a little bit about the nine-one-one operation. When you look at our budgets, our emergency services are more than just one department included. You've got radio or nine-one-one communications, emergency management, and EMS. There's two things that right now are not included. One of them is public safety answering point fund, and that's the money that's collected each month on your telephone bill to support the nine-one-one system. And the public safety training centers, which they have four people down there previously, were in the planned budget. And they've been moved to my budget, but this is a change of dollar there as of January the first. I'm going to start out just a little bit and have Johnny Wilson talk to you about the nine-one-one system and then we'll get into a number of calls that system gets each year out of town, Johnny's going to take it down.
Yes, thank you. Nine-one-one center, we answer all the calls for Buckingham County City of Icel. We process those calls and track them through the CAD system. We coordinate all the responses and disaster recovery efforts, develop hazard recovery plans and implement them to the jury. We've got, our staffing is basically five people around the clock in here in busy times, it jumps to six. So we'll bring the totals up. These are the nine-one-one calls. You'll see two thousand and twelve, our system is recorded through a state system, it's called E-CAT. And two thousand and twelve, they started halfway through the year, so that's why that, that number is low. It goes up and down as far as the numbers, the numbers you see on the screen are the actual calls, including business lines as well as nine-one-one lines. And two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, they're kind of the same, two thousand and sixteen's a little bit low. And E-CAT is playing with that system to see if it's actually found a filter out, abandoned calls, such as that, where we actually see actual calls as opposed to calls that have dropped out of the system. But that is the difference in that call number. Calls for service, you can see a steadily increase in it. Two thousand and fifteen, a little below seventy thousand. This includes all Buckingham County Fire Department, Buckingham EMS, and National Fire Department. We have an increase slightly, two thousand and seventeen was a substantial increase. And as you can see, two thousand and eighteen is July first to yesterday at five o'clock. And if that's, keeps on that trend, we'll go probably over eighty thousand every year for two thousand and eighteen. EMS incidents, the national, it's broke out, yes, Buckingham County EMS. You can see two thousand and thirteen is a little bit less, twenty-five thousand. Two thousand and seventeen, right at twenty-nine thousand calls for service. But that service is exploding. And I didn't have the information for just EMS yesterday, but it's well on its way to top this year's targets.
Okay, a little bit of example on, back to page four in your hand out there, on services we provide. Of course, we answer, Johnny just explained to you, is to process all the nine-one-one calls for Buckingham County and the City of Icel. Notified response units for fire departments and EMS to track the responses. We dispatch all fire departments, only thing we do not dispatch is Buckingham County Sheriff's Department and the Icel Police. They're in our center, but they do their own dispatching. As far as the emergency management side, we coordinate all the disaster response and recovery efforts. We've been fortunate that we didn't have an earthquake in Harvey, we didn't have any serious after effects of that or the hurricane that came up through Florida or Puerto Rico. A lot of times when we have a storm that comes in on the go, about two days later, we get a tremendous amount of rainfall. And that affects one little river, a bit more, and couldn't be anywhere but Buckingham County. But it's been some time since we've had a full scale disaster, thank goodness, I'll call wood there. We develop hazard and recovery plans, we implement it during a disaster. We also work with everything, nursing homes, schools, large businesses on developing their disaster plans. Recently, as an example, Medicare came out with some new guidelines for anybody who receives Medicare payments and they helped to develop, excuse me, a new disaster plan that's quite involved. That just went into effect this month, and we're trying to work our way through that with a lot of these facilities. We conduct fire inspections in the county. We do Woodville, we don't do Weaverville, we don't do Black Mountain, we do Bitterwell Forest, Icel is there on, we do Monastery. We do those on a regular basis. Respond to fires and conduct investigations, arson task force is part of my budget. And that's a prize for two people, one hired by the county, one hired by the city. They're also, in addition to being fired, arson investigators or certified law enforcement people where they can investigate and arrest, make an arrest if necessary, to hit them with arson investigation. And then they respond or provide to EMS service and paramedic level throughout Buckingham County. Johnny talked to you about the number of nine-one-one calls, he talked to you about the number of calls for service. EMS incidents, twenty seventeen was well over twenty-nine thousand, twenty-nine thousand seventy-six, something like that. If you come over to BJ, if you look at the personnel, we have, at present time, one hundred and fourteen people on staff. We've got one hundred and ten people, when you add the four remaining, ten from the public safety training facility down there, those four people, but then since they're in my budget, that's January the first, it brings it to one hundred and fourteen. Looking at the jail, we have a proposal here to provide paramedic level service with the jail. And that will add another six people or seven people to that, which will bring it up to one hundred, one hundred and twenty-one, if that's the way that the board sees fit to go. Our partners, partnerships, of course, we partner with all of the fire departments, both volunteer and municipal. And Buckingham County Rescue Squad is a separate agency from the fire department, they've been in business since nineteen sixty-two. City of Icel, of course, we share the nine-one-one communications with them, facilities, resources. We share calls, we have a call share program, they provide, funded for three of our dispatchers since we dispatch Icel Fire Department, and then we in turn provide some funded money for them. Or the backup center, which is over in the Icel Police Department, where their communication is used to be. If something happens to us out at the nine-one-one center, they can just pick it up and go down there. That equipment is sitting there and it's hot all the time where they can start dispatching and we won't lose the capability. Local schools and colleges, we've been working a lot, particularly Buckingham County Schools, on developing their emergency plan over the past few years. And incidentally, the state of North Carolina, the state emergency management, have used what the Buckingham County Schools system came up with as a model plan to share with counties all across the state. We do educational programs, do a lot of career recruitment. Sometime we'll have a group of our people staffing a table or something where we have conferences going on or different things, trying to recruit people and bring them into Buckingham County from other areas. Department of Public Safety, we handle all of the homeland security grants for Buckingham County. They come through, emergency managers, they come through. The Department of Public Safety, the state emergency management agency, and then down to the different counties. We also participate on a regional group of people, a group that's about eleven western counties, and we make determinations on, based on the amount of dollars that we get each year through homeland security, what we're going to spend it for. We try to have every county at the same level, and we've been doing that probably for about fifteen years. Centers for Disease Control, we've got some funds that come down through health and social services that we have been managing that throughout for them. And preparedness in the response to health crises that may come up from time to time. We handle the funds that go to the North Carolina Forest Service, which each county has to provide some matter of funding, I think there is twenty percent, twenty percent of the budget, something like that. And that, those dollars are in, happen to be in the emergency management budget. Icel Compost Squad, that's a similar program. And those people participate, if you have even a small claim or a crash or something, or a larger one, they also have people that can assist us with their cadets and training and search techniques to where if we had a search for a lost person, they can come out and work with us. They can also do some flyover for us if we needed them, particularly if we have to be looking for a lost child and there's somebody back in, back in the mountains from time to time. Some of the challenges that we have, that we're faced with, major events, and that could be something that where we end up with disaster declaration. I think the last time we had a declaration here was a snowstorm, four years ago, five years ago, something like that. Party Rock Fire this past year, that was a disaster declaration. That was a little bit different from floods or tornadoes or hurricanes or events such as that. But anyway, that was a disaster situation. And Buckingham County, through the county, what we can supply, what the fire department supplies, not including the city of Icel, we got a check. supplies, not including the city of Iceville, we got a check of about $450,000 to reimburse us. We take care of the paperwork for things like that. Mass care, if we had to evacuate a facility, hospital, nursing home, I may have noticed on the news where they evacuated a nursing home in Transylvania County a couple of days ago, got water, I think the pipe broke and they had to evacuate the residents. We handle things like that, any kind of mass care, mass injury, mass, big accident situation where you've got a lot of people, and we think we need to. The thing that affects us probably the most, population, as you know, Buckland County's growing every month, every year, the population's aging, that affects us. I read an article a couple of weeks ago, where it talked about Obamacare had even affected ambulance services, because more people were seeking health, had health issues, were seeking treatment, which caused ambulance calls to go up somewhat. And they had factored that in, and that's something, quite frankly, I'd never even thought about. But that's something that we have to look at. This past year, for example, our call volume went up about 5%, this past year it went up about 3%. So, you know, and it's normally at about 2% to 3% per year, what we've been watching over the last 10 or 15 years. So, population demographics, that's something we're looking at all the time. Where are our calls? What kind of calls are we having, and certainly opioid crisis, which a couple of years ago had been active, Ellen and Mike all been going out, done a lot of work on that. But that's something that, you heard the fire departments talking about, where we're responding to a lot of overdoses, a lot of, and sometimes it's a repeat situation. Hopefully, we can somehow get our arms around that and do something about it. Increase in cost, that causes, causes our call, cost per call, we go up, both with medications, Narcan, for example, just the wear and tear of vehicles. Our ambulance fleet, we've got a fairly new fleet by the year old, we did switch from diesel back to gasoline, because of the tremendous cost of repairing diesel engines in the morning. And if you have problems with them, it's, you're looking at $17,000 plus just to replace one of those engines. So, anyhow, we went back, a lot of counties are going back to gasoline, and hopefully that's going to work out for us. It's something we look at every time that we change our business. Something that we look at, if we get, for example, somebody went out of ambulance business, any of the fire departments went out of business, or stopped for whatever reason, and the county will be the primary provider, we'd have to make up for that and pick up that call. So, that's something that, that hopefully that's not going to happen, but it's something we're prepared for. Now, when you're looking at staff recruitment and retention, it takes about three months of the time we hire a paramedic, until they're familiar enough with our protocol, our treatment protocols, everything about our service before we can turn them loose, just like law enforcement or fire or anybody else. Our average tenure for personnel that come to work for Buckland County, the average is about 10 years. People that are eligible to retire from Buckland County over the next five years, we've got 11 of those right now. Hopefully, they may stay, not all go at one time. You've probably heard the Sheriff's Department lost one, seven at the end of December, so you know, that's hard, that's a hard gap to fill. Now, when you look at spending and revenue, we budget for uniforms, fuel, medical supplies, training, personnel costs is something that's there, that's given. Other county departments budgeting costs for us, like Eric over here at Kid Group, and the base people, the base salary, the mandatory overtime that we have, called working 56-hour work, and we have to pay time and hour over 40 hours, so there's a, there's a built-in overtime there, but anyway, they can keep up with that. Insurance, property insurance, liability, employee benefits, utilities, all of that's a given, that's just part of the budget. And unless that fills up for whatever reason, then, you know, there's nothing that we can do about that. When you look at the spending and the revenue on page 15, the red line through there is what we, is our, pretty well our revenue, and the way the county has looked at this over the years, we collect on about 70% of our calls that we bill. But by the time you have these write-offs for Medicare, Medicaid, and other insurance companies, we only collect about 50% of the revenue we bill. But if you look at the red line on this, on this graph, that's about how much it costed us to operate EMS. And the county had looked for years, if we could recoup how much that budget costed us, you know, we would be, that's what they wanted, what the commissioners had wanted to do. And that, you know, that's your call, we've got a budget of, of over 13, about 13 million dollars, I guess, and it's showing us collecting about 6 million of that. Now, there's a possibility that we're going to be able to go up on our ambulance bills, but I don't have the figures yet. Medicare's supposed to give us maybe a 2% increase in what they are going to approve. If that's the case, I'll be back to y'all to see if you want to try to recoup that on, on our, on our bills. Personally, I think we should, if the money's there, I don't want to leave it on the table of the cost of that to operate EMS. But looking here, you look at this chart, you've got the discretionary spending, revenue office, expansion, nondiscretionary in the EMS revenues. Page 16, this is showing the budget broken out a little bit closer in some other ways. Page 17, showing the expansion budget, you see something happening. This is what we estimated will cost to put the paramedics in the jail. This is providing one paramedic, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Salaried and benefits, $519,317 of uniforms, office expenses, equipment, and that's a hard part. That's the one you heard Jeff Justice talking about with the fire departments, and their paramedic gambling system, so funded for $40,000. 10 years ago, if you did a comparison, they might have been $12,000. That's how much this equipment had gone up. But anyway, this was big stat before full-time paramedics and three partner paramedics. So, you can see, you've got a total of $575,017. It's expensive to operate something like that. It's expensive to operate ambulance, or it's just a part of the healthcare cost in the moment. Now, where does the money come from? Our charges for first response and transport services, $6.2 million. City of Iceville coffee charity for 911 dispatch, this is where they reimburse emergency services with three dispatches, $184,000. Federal and state grants, $151,000. Reversal for advantage measures, $20,000. And what that is, if we go and do standbys, which we do quite a few of them, and it's a for-profit operation, we charge them what our, basically what our cost is. If it's nonprofit, that's a different, we don't charge them for it, because they're mainly doing that for fundraising, to take care of their operation. And in a nutshell, I know you all have to be back in town for the charter, but that's the EMS or the emergency services request, and this time I'll entertain any questions.
Is there any training support for the paramedics now to deal with all these injuries? How do they get support?
I can hear a big bit, I've got, I've got air stoned up.
Is there any, with, with the paramedics responding to all the opioid calls, what kind of support do they get? Do they get enough support, or is there more we need to do?
No, I think they're getting enough support, you know, you know, y'all have been all good, but I certainly can't watch.
So, tell me more about the six that's needed for the jail, where did that number come from? Was six?
We live that, that they want, they want in one, you know, they want to terminate contractors, nurses.
This is an additional service that was recommended following the review of the jail and some of the health risks and issues they're dealing with. We're actually out on a request for proposals, so doing it internally with our EMS staff is one option, and proceeding through the outside providers. So, that's having one qualified paramedic, seven days a week, 24 hours a day in the jail, without an ambulance. They would not transport.
Yeah, they won't be doing any transport, they'll remain right there, and if they need to transport, they'll call one of our transport units to come over there to the jail and pick them up.
That closes Friday, I guess, the week.
They are, they will be able, and this came about, I can reach, reach the death of jail, and we're all made with it, this came about as a way to maybe recognize certain signs quicker, going, paramedics are trained to recognize fetal symptoms a lot quicker than maybe other people.
And it'll take the six to cover 24/7.
There'll be one person there 24 hours a day.
I mean, that's, that's what you have to, that's what you have to remember, a big part of it is the fact you got to do 24/7, so it's not like normal setting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, well, Commissioner, any, or Mandy, any other items that we need to cover at this work session?
I don't think so. I'll leave you with the last question.
Well, I think, all great information. Jerry, thank you for this initial presentation, it's just helpful to get the process started for us. And thanks everyone for being here today. I think we'll adjourn the work session, and we'll see some of you over at the jail and camp office.